Chair Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Chair Najak.
Here.
Yanamono is absent today. Rigby?
Here.
Fly?
Here.
Wing? And Bruce?
Here.
Thank you. Item number three on tonight's agenda is the city council update. Do we have council liaison virtually?
Not today.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is item number 4.1, approval of the minutes. These are the minutes from last meeting, April 14th, 2025. Commissioners, were there any revisions or comments to the proposed minutes?
I have none.
Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second, Ed.
Excellent. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item number five on the agenda is a public comment. Christina, do we have anyone here that wishes to provide a public comment or raise an issue concerning items not on the agenda tonight?
None today.
Thank you. Number six on the agenda is the Commission for Citizen Involvement. The general updates, I have two updates here. The first one is from the Evergreen Neighborhood Association, the annual membership meeting. It is Friday, May 9th at 7:00 PM. The location will be the community room at the Winward, 130 A Street. On the agenda are some casual conversation and tasty treats, emergency preparedness, treasurer's report approval of the minutes, and election of the board members and the officers, and the most fun part, which is door prize drawings. And that is again, May 9th at 7:00 PM. Also have an update from the Uplands Neighborhood Association, the general membership meeting. It is dated, it will be held on May 17th, 2025 at 7:00 PM, and this is at the Lake Oswego Junior High at Uplands Library. This is a special presentation on the upcoming school bond, again, May 17th at 7:00 PM. Okay, with that, we will go on to the next item on the agenda, which is 7.1. We'll have a session update, an update on the 2025 Oregon Legislative Session, and Staff Coordinator Numanaloo will take us from there.
There it goes. There we go. Good evening, Commissioners. We are having this session for you tonight because at prior sessions, either at work sessions or hearings, we'd mentioned that there was some legislative land use and housing legislative bills that were being considered that potentially could have an impact on some of the code amendments you were considering, and also could have an impact on our upcoming workload, and actually probably will have an impact on our upcoming workload if these bills are passed. So it's just a good idea to check in. We're about half, a little over halfway through the current legislative session, and I just wanted to kind of show you the bills that we are focusing on in terms of land use and planning, housing bills that could be, have some consequence or some impact to Lake Oswego. So for the agenda tonight, I am going to give you an overview of the legislative process. I don't know how familiar you are all with the Oregon legislative process, but I'll give you a broad overview of that. We'll talk about how, what the City of Lake Oswego's intergovernmental team does to prepare, or to kind of track and respond to the various legislation that can come at all levels of government, both state, federal, state, as well as regional. We'll talk about what the city's 2025 legislative priorities are for this session, and then I'll give you an overview of six housing and land use bills that we are tracking. So in terms of the legislative process, in general, every year, Oregon has a legislative session. In the odd number of years, there is a long legislative session, which is what we are currently in right now, since 2025 is an odd year. In the even years, it is what's called a short legislative session. So in the long legislative session, it starts in January and it lasts for 160 days, and it's basically intended for a full legislative agenda. They also adopt their biennial budget, the state's biennial budget in the long session, and it's just a time for major policy bills to be proposed, as well as comprehensive reforms. In even number of years, it's really about minor budget adjustments, maybe minor bills, and dealing with like emergency or urgent legislation. So we're in, as I mentioned before, we're in the current long legislative session. It began on January 1st, and it will actually end on June 29th, and my staff report had an error. It said June 28th. It's actually June 29th, if you're, just to be technical. So in terms of what the process is, a legislator will come up with an idea. Sometimes it will start out as a legislative concept that we will actually get to see and be able to comment on before it becomes a bill, actually introduced as a bill. Once it becomes a bill, it needs to be assigned to a committee, and then that committee will hold public hearings and make amendments where needed, and those amendments are typically made based on public comment. Anyone can submit public comment during those hearings, including the city, or other agencies, or just general members of the public can as well. Then the bill has to be passed by a committee, and then that full process is repeated in the chamber, and bills can be brought up either by the Senate or the legislature. So, sorry, I lost my... But once the bill is assigned to a committee, as I mentioned before, it can often be amended, but it also can die at various stages. And so, for instance, the next deadline for, that has to be met is on May 9th, when a bill must have been scheduled for a vote in a committee and must be voted on and passed by May 23rd. So all of the bills that we're going to talk about tonight have gone through several amendments. Some of them are specifically the governor's bill, so I think there's probably a good likelihood that they're going to be passed, but of course, none of them have been passed yet, and they could still undergo further amendments. So I just want to clarify that. The city manager's office leads a legislative team made up of staff from multiple departments. So I'm part of the team. We have folks from our engineering department that are part of the team, our sustainability coordinator, and then the deputy city manager, Madison Thiessen, is actually, kind of leads the team under the direction of the city manager. And essentially, what we do is we monitor the legislation and advocate for the interests of Lake Oswego, but it's going to be based on the legislative principles and priorities that are going to be set by the city council, which I'll talk about in a minute. And this team does monitor programs, policies, and legislation at three levels, which would include federal, state, and regional. We partner with other organizations in order to help track those bills, because it is quite complicated. At a federal level, the city is affiliated with the National League of Cities, if you've heard of them, and typically, it's the mayor or city manager who will coordinate responses with the National League of Cities. I don't typically have any involvement in that myself as a staff person. At the state level, we partner directly with the League of Oregon Cities, or LOC, and we really rely on this organization to lobby for cities in Oregon, and really to track the thousands of bills that come up. So this session, I think in the staff report, I discussed that there were 3,500 bills that were proposed during this legislative session, which I understand is a record, and there's no way that we could understand those bills, let alone even track them on our own. So the League of Oregon Cities is incredibly helpful to us. And I attend biweekly meetings with the League of Oregon Cities on all the housing and land use bills. They have other groups that meet also biweekly on other topics, like, you know, transportation and other things. And it's really helpful, because we can discuss with other cities what our issues or concerns are. We can consolidate our comments, and they can lobby on behalf of the city. But the city will also submit comments on our own behalf when there are things that are particularly vexing to the City of Lake Oswego that we want to get our issues across. And that will typically come from Madison Thiessen, that are all filtered through her, or sometimes the mayor will attend a legislative session and either submit testimony in person or in writing. And on the regional level, we work closely with local government partners on common goals, so things that kind of don't stop at our boundaries, like transportation issues and waste issues and that type of things. And so those partners would include organizations like Metro, Clackamas County, Trimet, and our other neighboring jurisdictions. And we have a number of regional committees the city is involved in, and the mayor and the city council typically appoint policy reps, and also they designate technical staff to attend these meetings. So for instance, Mr. Eric Wilson will attend our Metro Technical Advisory Committee meetings, which I think are monthly?
Yes.
Yes. So.
MTAC.
Yeah, MTAC. So you can see, we are actively monitoring policies, projects, and programs from all of these levels of government. In terms of the city priorities, the legislative principles that have kind of, that have stayed the same since 2020, when they first adopted them, are to preserve home rule authority, and that's our ability to make our own local decision-making efforts, and not allowing the state to preempt or limit local government authority. It's tricky with land use, because we get home rule for most, for most things in Oregon, but not for land use. Land use comes straight down from the state. We have to comply with state law. We don't have a choice. And that includes our statewide planning goals, and the Oregon revised statutes, Oregon administrative rules, all of those things, and even government, or governor executive orders, we have to comply with. Another legislative principle for the city is to avoid unfunded mandates. Of course, we don't want mandates issued by the state where they don't help us comply by providing funding for, or resources to implement them. And then we want to, the city wants to leverage regional and state partnerships to assure that we're coordinating with outside agencies to achieve our community goals. For our priority areas for 2025, the council adopted four priority areas. I cannot speak to you about all of these, because I can't be an expert on all of these. So for instance, the comprehensive transportation funding package is a priority for the council. That's something that our engineering staff is going to be monitoring and commenting on. Restoring recreational immunity, I could tell you what that is, but I, we don't need to talk about it tonight. Our Parks Department is the department who really is monitoring that. But the things that we're looking on out at is a pause on additional housing policy and regulations, and comprehensive funding for essential infrastructure. So in terms of pausing housing policy and regulations, the city, when we submit comments, and all of our comments, one of the first things that we says, say to the state is, "Please stop. We are on a hamster wheel here. Let us get through all of the mandates that you've put on us for the past, I don't know, since 2019 at least, and deal with the, and limit your legislation to just making refinements and improvements to pass policies, and not, and we will oppose the creation of any new housing guidelines, policies, or processes." So that is a consistent comment that we have whenever we submit comments to the legislature, is, "Please stop. Let us focus on what you've already, which you've already mandated that we do in terms of our code amendments and other planning initiatives, and, you know, let us also see how this is being borne out in our community." So for instance, we're just now seeing middle housing being permitted, and we haven't even seen it really being built yet. So let us see what it looks like on the ground so that we, before we start making more and more changes. So I'm going to talk to you about six bills, as I mentioned before. These first three, I'm just going to highlight very quickly. They're actually bills that I think are good for us, and I think will be helpful. The first is House Bill 3031, and this is the Governor's Infrastructure Program, and it basically establishes a financing program for local governments for housing infrastructure. And infrastructure would be things like utilities, transportation improvements, that type of thing. And it provides, I think it's through Business Oregon, grants and loans and revolving loans for infrastructure to cities. But it, it's only for housing that meets a minimum density threshold. So I think it has to be 17 dwelling units per acre in order to qualify for the financing, and only the, for the grants and forgivable loans, that only applies to affordable housing that meets minimum density requirements. So that's great. It's a funding source. Last I looked, I believe it was $100 million, so it's a decent amount of money, and obviously, welcome to have that available for infrastructure. The next one is HB 2950. This requires the Land Conservation and Development Commission to amend Goal 1, which is citizen involvement of the statewide planning goals, by June 30th, 2029. And this is, I think, great, because we, it's my understanding that this goal has never been updated since it was originally adopted in 1973. And so what they have to address is creating, implementing, implementation and outreach standards. They also have to create education standards. They have to address inequities and overcome barriers to public participation, which are not currently in the bill, or not currently in the, sorry, the goal. And it requires local governments to adopt amendments to their comp plan and zoning regulations within one year after LCDC has amended the goal. And so that would mean that the city would have to update our codes by, it looks like June of 2030, roughly. I suppose they could adopt it earlier. I don't know if they will, but as far as we know, if this is adopted, as is, we would have to update our codes by 2030. And then finally, on this section of bills, House Bill 3560 and 3496. I put these on here because it will allow, it will require us to amend our codes. And what it does is it expands the allowable sites that allow childcare facilities. And it also directs LCDC to draft guidance for citing and incentivizing the citing of childcare facilities. And I think this is really important, because, number one, we have a shortage of childcare facilities everywhere, including in LO. And right now, it's actually pretty cumbersome for childcare facilities to get approval in LO, because a lot of them want to go into existing church facilities, which is a logical location. We require a conditional use permit for that, and if you know anything about a conditional use permit, there's a lot of application administration involved. It's expensive, and it can be a barrier to childcare development. So I think this is a great bill in that it makes it an allowed use in any multifamily residential zone, and it makes it an allowed use if it's co-located with a religious, public, or civic facility in any other residential zone. So I think it'll be a great amendment to our code that will hopefully make it easier to cite childcare facilities in the city. And I don't know when the effective date of that bill is, but I do know that LCDC has to adopt guidance for local governments by December 31st, 2026. Okay, so the bulk of my presentation is going to be focused on House Bill 2138, and then there's two more bills after this that are a little less involved, which is the Governor's Middle Housing Bill. And there is a lot in this bill. It is 49 pages long, and it's got a lot of meat to it. I would say, in general, I have kind of just a general overview. I would say it expands middle housing, it reforms expedited land division, and it directs LCDC to adopt rules that will promote housing development and implement various provisions of this bill by January 1st, 2028. What is frustrating about this bill is if you try to figure out when it's supposed to, when cities are supposed to implement it, it is incredibly confusing. Both Eric and I have looked at it, and I cannot tell you when the government, or when the city has to comply. It appears January 1st, 2027, is when cities have to apply for most of the provisions in this bill. But what's odd is that a lot of the rulemaking that LCDC has to do doesn't happen until January 1st of 2028, which would be after. So I don't know if that's just us not being able to decipher what the state has written, which would not be unusual, unfortunately, but that is something we need to get further clarification on, that that's unclear. But nevertheless, these are the components of the bill that we should expect if it gets passed. So the first is that they're changing the definition of middle housing units to allow any of the units to be attached or detached. So that would include duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and cottage clusters. All of them now could be attached or detached. What's unclear to us is whether that makes, requires the city to allow both attached or detached, or whether it gives us a choice. I don't know the answer to that. It doesn't really, it's not really clear in the bill. I would assume that would be made clear by the LCDC rulemaking. However, I can tell you, under our current code, we do not allow, or we require, excuse me, we require duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes to be physically attached. We don't allow them to be detached. So we're going to need to figure out what implication that has for Lake Oswego.
I would say, I think we already are allowed to have them be detached, so I would imagine that this is a requirement, but yeah. I think we already have the choice, at least.
I want, that is, that is the way I want to read it, but, or that is the way I think it reads, but I also don't want to assume, so we need to get confirmation. But that's, that is the implication, is that we have to allow them to be attached or detached. Another provision is, and this is a little bit hard to explain, it allows middle housing units to be located on a lot that contains an existing single-family dwelling. It also allows middle housing units to be located on a lot that contains a single-family dwelling that also has an ADU. Or it allows middle housing units to be, on a lot that contains an existing duplex. And I guess I would explain this by saying, under our current standard, let's say somebody had a 7,500 square foot lot, and in that, in the zone it was located, you were allowed to have a triplex on that size lot. If somebody has an existing single-family dwelling, they could now keep that dwelling and put the triplex on the lot, provided that they could fit it on there and meet, you know, the setbacks and other standards. I think that, in a way, that could be a good thing, because that will potentially allow more existing single-family dwellings or units to be preserved, and that it tends to be more affordable type of housing, because it's already existing, could be older stock. But it does allow more units on the site than before. Yeah, so that is in this bill. Another provision in this bill, it would prohibit local governments from requiring a traffic impact analysis or offsite improvements for middle housing development. Now, this wouldn't apply in situations where it's a townhome or cottage cluster that has more than 12 units. This is important, because when this bill originally was drafted, it basically said that we could not require a traffic impact analysis, and we could not require frontage improvements at all for any middle housing. And that was extremely concerning to the city, and I submitted comments several times, and reiterated at LOC meetings that that was not going to work for Lake Oswego and other cities that are almost entirely built out, that has a lot of, basically inadequate infrastructure, right? A lot of our, a lot of our roads and whatnot don't have stormwater facilities. They were built under county standards. They don't have sidewalks, that type of thing. So when we have these infill developments for middle housing, we, right now, we can exact improvements, and we do exact improvements to get, say, stormwater facilities, extension of utilities, sidewalks, or pathways, that type of thing. So they listened, which was great, and so they changed the bill, or they amended the bill to just not allow us to require offsite improvements, which we typically didn't before, anyway. And then not requiring a traffic impact analysis, that's pretty consistent with our current code, because something under 12 units is probably not going to trigger a traffic impact analysis under our current standards, anyway. So we were very happy to get that through with the amendments, but it was extremely concerning when they weren't going to allow us to do frontage improvements for any middle housing in earlier drafts of the bill. The next provision would allow one to two bonus units for middle housing if one unit or more is either accessible, and this is defined in the bill, or affordable, also defined in the bill. And the way that it breaks down is if you are allowed by code a duplex or a triplex, if at least one of those units in the duplex or triplex is either accessible or affordable, then you get a bonus unit. So then it'll turn into a triplex or a quadplex, whereas before, the zone may only, you would only be allowed a duplex or a triplex. You get two bonus units if you're proposing townhouse or cottage clusters, and at least one of those units is affordable or accessible. So that means, for instance, if you're doing a quadplex, you could have six units. If you're doing a cottage cluster in Lake Oswego, we limit it to eight units. You could now have 10 units. And what it requires, that the city has to allow commensurate increases in floor area height or density to accommodate those bonus units. I don't know exactly how that looks like. Does that mean that they get to double their height? I don't know. So there, there's a lot of questions that I have, and a lot of big concerns that I have for this. I don't know how much of a demand this will be in Lake Oswego. We'll have to see. But if this passes, we potentially will be having more units if they provide accessible or affordable units in the development.
I've got a question, then, to sort of test that I'm understanding this idea, if I can interrupt.
Sure.
So if you were to do a top and bottom duplex on a lot, and there wasn't room to add another unit on the side, all of the acreage is already full, then someone, if they made one of those units accessible or affordable, the city would have to waive its height requirement, and someone could just build a third story?
That is my concern.
That's kind of a Frankenstein of a building.
It really, I've summarized it here, but it really doesn't have any more detail than what you see here.
Okay, so it's pretty
Yeah.
loose and undefined. Okay.
Yeah, I wish that I could tell you what that means, but I can't at this point. And I, my assumption is it will come out in the rulemaking that LCDC will be doing. But again, it depends, you know, I'm still concerned, because we can't figure out when cities are required to comply, and it seems to be before LCDC has done their rulemaking. So, yeah, we need to, we need to work that out.
So is lot coverage not envisioned with this particular commensurate increase sort of framework? Because that, I mean, that might almost force it to be high if that wasn't allowed. But anyway, it seems like, yeah, this will be something that could result in outcomes. I think a lot of these things, just to point out, are things, you know, provisions that could result in outcomes that are, regardless of your thoughts of these, at least vastly different, or significantly different than what we had kind of sold to the community when we originally went out with the middle housing code and talked about, you know, how these units would need to fit in with an envelope of, you know, an existing single-family residence. And that was a really, you know, large guiding concept for what we were doing at that time. And, you know, other sort of specific things about which units are allowed against this detach or attach question as well. Just a lot of things that the community was happy that we were allowed to do under the provisions of that bill are now kind of being whittled away in ways that, it's just, it's going to create, I guess, a difficult, public sort of facing moment with folks that we went out and talked about these provisions previously, because a lot of this is now changed.
Yeah, I mean, the exact language from the bill is, it says, "A city must allow commensurate increases to the developable area, floor area, height, or density requirements to allow for the development of the units." So your guess is as good as mine, and I don't know, it's the developer's choice. Yeah, it's unclear to me how we're going to implement that, but we'll have a lot of questions about that, for sure. The next provision, this is actually a really big one. It invalidates CCNRs or other recorded instruments executed before, on, or after January 1st, 2021 that prohibits the development of middle housing units or ADUs on lots that allow single-family dwellings. And essentially, what this is, is, and this came up during the middle housing code revisions, was that we weren't applying this evenly throughout the city, because if you're in a planned development and you have a CCNR that that says that you can't have any more units other than your single-family units, then they don't have to deal with middle housing. And so it's really, puts all the burden on the rest of the city that's not in a planned development. Well, the, the state is now preempting that, and they're saying that that is no longer valid. So if you, if you're not aware of where we have planet, planned developments, Westlake is pretty much all planned developments. Actually, Mountain Park is, but I would argue that Mountain Park already has a lot of middle housing up there. Village on the Lake, if you're familiar with that, that's a, that's a planned development. So lots of big planned developments in the city. Practically, does it, do we, do I think there's going to be a lot of middle housing there? I don't know, but, but it certainly does, at least even the playing field, so that everyone in the city, everywhere in the city that allows a single-family dwelling that's zoned residential will have to allow middle housing. And this would become effective on January 1st, 2027, so not right away, but in, in a couple of years, or a year and a half. The next two require cities to allow single-room occupancies, which is defined as a residential development of four attached or detached units that are independently rented and lockable and provide living and sleeping space for the exclusive use of an occupant, but requires the occupant to share sanitary or food prep facilities with other units in the occupancy. So it's kind of like a dorm room type of a situation. Again, I don't know that we're going to see a lot of this development in, in the city of Lake Oswego, but we can't prohibit it. And in fact, in multifamily zones, we have to allow SROs up to three times the number of units allowed by the maximum density of that zone for any zone that allows, that's zoned multifamily and allows five or more units.
A question on that. Does Lake Oswego have any restrictions on things like halfway houses, recovery houses? Because SROs are often used in that sort of capacity.
Not that I am aware of. Those things, I think, have some protections under state or federal law. And I'm not an expert on that, so I can't advise on it, but I can't recall of any specific zoning regulations that would prevent that. Okay, just two slides on HP 2138, so we're almost through it. The next provision requires tree removal codes relating to housing development to be clear and objective. This is something that actually currently applies today, although it's not as directly applied. This explicitly states that cities have to do it. Some of you may be aware that we are about to undertake a tree code amendment process that is going to get started this summer. And one of the things that we are going to be doing is assuring that our standards for tree removal are clear and objective. So we're currently in the process of complying with this. So that shouldn't be a problem for us to comply with. The next provision allows applicants to request the expedited land division process for middle housing land divisions. It also allows applicants to apply for middle housing land division before, during, or after a building permit review process. I will say that under the current city's standards, we allow that anyway, so this isn't anything new for us, although I don't know why anybody would do the land division process before they submit for a building permit, because you'd have to already have your plans, like, completely dialed in and ready to go. Otherwise, if you go through the process and you have to amend it later, it's, it's kind of a pain. So that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But in any case, it gives the builders more flexibility. It also allows concurrent application of multiple middle housing land divisions, which was not clear before, and we appreciate that clarification, because it is complicated, and we do expect to have one of those, potentially on Stafford Road. There is a, if you're familiar with the C3 church site, which is just north of Rasik Park. There, the, the owner has come in for multiple pre-applications to do a, a middle housing development that would involve multiple lots. And then the, the other change in this bill is it requires cities to make a final decision within 100 days of a complete application for a middle housing land division that involves affordable housing. This is, this should be okay to comply with. I mean, our current policy is we expedite as much as possible any applications for affordable housing, so I don't see any problem with that. Currently, though, we technically have 120 days, so it just reduces it by 20 days. Having to, and we have to have a final decision. That means including all appeals. So if they submit an application, it gets appealed to the DRC, and then the city council, that all has to be done within 100 days, which can be tight if it does get appealed twice. Oh, and then finally, as I mentioned before, the bill requires LCDC to adopt rules that would implement the provisions, certain provisions of this bill, as well as the other items that are listed up here by January 1st, 2028. And those rules that they have to adopt include prohibiting or restricting siting and design standards that actually prevent or discourage, or have the effect of preventing or discouraging the siting of middle housing that is manufactured, site-built, or prefabricated. So I guess any middle housing, I don't know that there's any other type besides those three. It establishes parameters on what is considered unreasonable cost or delay for AD, for accessory dwelling units and SROs. And those, there are provisions in current law that says that we can't cause unreasonable cost or delay for those types of development, but it doesn't say what that means. So the, they're directing the LCDC to come up with rules to establish what that means. LCDC has to come up with rules that regulate cottage clusters to incentivize smaller, less expensive housing, shared community amenities, and other regulations that implement the term "small footprint or floor area", which is found in the revised definition of cottage clusters. So if you look at the, the current definition of cottage clusters, I think it says 900 square feet or less is, is what is defined as a cottage, a cottage. Now, they've changed that to small, or footprint, to small footprint or floor area, but they don't provide any parameters on what that means. So I believe that the DLCD will be, LCDC will be establishing exactly what, what that means, which means it could limit the kinds of restrictions that we could put on the size of cottage clusters, in terms of footprint or floor area. They, they also have to come up with rules that amend siting and designs parameters for middle housing types. It's that broad. I don't know what that means, but it's quite broad. And then amending permissible discretionary criteria applied by local governments in evaluating housing under alternative approval criteria. So let me, let me explain that in layman's terms. So our, the state law requires that any standards that we apply through our land use and design review process has to be clear and objective. However, there is a provision in Oregon law that allows cities the discretion to provide an alternative process that is more discretionary. And the advantage of that to applicants is that if you look at clear and objective standards, they're very regimented, they're very strict, and they don't have a lot of flexibility. So if we provide this alternative process, if the applicant voluntarily elects to go through with that, it's much broader criteria. So it'd be things like, it has to be, you know, compatible with the neighborhood, or it has to, you know, have some sort of a design aesthetic, or, or something that's very broad and, and more undefined, but gives them more leeway. Well, I guess the, the state wants to have some control over the type of discretionary criteria that the city can apply. So that's what that provision gets at.
How do, how do you deal with all this subjective language that's in these House bills, anyway? Is there any real definitive statement about what middle housing is?
Yeah, we know what middle housing is. That's, that is very clearly defined.
Do you have the dimensions and everything like that?
So there is, under the Oregon Administrative Rules, Division 46, it outlines very specific rules for middle housing. This bill is amending the Oregon Revised Statutes, which are broad rules that we have to comply with. And then generally, what they do is they then direct LCDC to come up with the OARs, or Oregon Administrative Rules, that actually implement those broader rules. And so they're, they're going to be more detailed at that point, we hope.
What do you do about a statement like this? "Regulating cottage clusters to incentivize smaller, less expensive housing"? How, how do you, how, what do you do to establish a rule there that explains that?
And that is what the, that is the purpose of the Land Conservation and Development Commission, is to interpret and develop those rules when, for, that are related to land use and planning in, in the state. So when they come up with these broad rules, that, like what you just read, it is that LCDC is tasked with then coming up with the specific rules to implement that broader rule.
Okay, so it's broken down into some sort of incremental language that gives you an idea of what incentivize means?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's certainly, you know, we, we have some experience with this before, with the middle housing code, where the state passed a law, House Bill 2001, then took a few years to develop their rules for the actual implementation of middle housing. So, you know, based on that process, we know that this will help us to, you know, answer questions, just like the ones that you're asking about exactly what this means for the city. What do you mean by smaller housing? How small? What do you mean by less expensive housing? How are we going to ensure that? So I think, you know, luckily, this is, you know, on the state to pass those rules. I think the biggest sort of questions for the city is, you know, what do we do between then and now, knowing that we lack certainty about what exactly this is going to mean? And, you know, I think, you know, in particular, as Jessica pointed out, the rules seem to, you know, depending on how you read them, we might be required to comply at the same time that these rules are required to be created. So how is that going to work, right? Like, what, what is the city going to do? How are we going to have time to actually adopt code? So yeah, we're, we're concerned that, you know, even though we know that there's a process to, to get there, you know, we have some concerns about what that will look like, and, you know, particularly the timing of the process.
Yeah, and it, and it has implications for the kind of work that we're working on now, because, you know, what we don't want to do is be inefficient and, you know, adopt new standards and new rules that we just have to change again in two years, because they've, LCDC has adopted standards that we have to comply with, and we just amended our code. So, you know, we don't like redoing our work. But again, the, the, you know, you, you, you all make recommendations as a planning commission to the city council. The city council is the ones who makes the decisions on what, you know, what kind of amendments we, we make. But we definitely want to consider this when we're amending our codes, because we could have to turn around and change them again in a short time later.
Okay, what else did I?
Yeah, so you already talked about regulating cottage clusters to incentivize smaller, less expensive housing, shared amenities, other things. I don't know what that means. We will certainly find out what that means. And, oh, we already talked about the discretionary criteria. I think I've covered everything on this slide, so I'll move on. So the next bill that I wanted to cover was Senate Bill 6. And we're calling, we're describing this as the building permit review shot clock. And what it requires is that our building official, official, or basically our building department, is required to approve, issue, or disapprove, and deny any application for, that involves middle housing or that involves a single-family dwelling that's part of a subdivision of six or more lots. So it's very specific. It's not all single-family. It's just if it's part of a subdivision that has six or more lots, no later than 45 business days after an applicant submits what they're calling a complete application. This bill started out just really bad. So this has gotten exponentially improved over what it started, because I think the person who, or whoever drafted it didn't really understand how this process worked. So this is much, much improved as, as to when it started. But it does require that our building official have to define and publish on the city's website what criteria we reuse to determine when an application is complete. I think that's probably the hardest part of the bill, because it, it might seem, because especially when you're reviewing an application and you come across things, our current process is very iterative. We review it, we send comment, we send comments back, they get it back to us, we review it again, and, and we just kind of go through it until all the issues are addressed. So how that's going to work with this is, is a little unclear, because we have to, at one point, determine it's complete, and that's when our, our, our clock starts ticking. So how we define a complete application is going to be really important. And that is up to the city to do that. The consequence of us not complying with that 45-day time period is that an applicant can bring an action in court for an injunction to require the city to issue the permit, and the court could award application fees, expenses, and attorney's fees to the applicant if they prevail. So that could be quite costly if the applicant is successful in their action, court action. And so the consequence of this is if we can't make that timeline, we may be required to deny the permit in order to avoid that consequence, which really does not result in a streamlined application for an applicant, because then they have to reapply and start all over again. So I'm not sure, and we submitted comments to that effect, but yet this bill persists, so we, we shall see if it ultimately gets passed. If the bill is passed, it will become effective on the date of approval of the bill, which appears to be whenever it's passed. So that means it would be effective right away, potentially at the end of June, beginning of July. And the last bill that I wanted to cover tonight is Senate Bill 974. Like the building review, this establishes a shot clock, but it's for the engineering plan review, and also has other implications, which I'll talk about here in a minute. But essentially, what it requires is local governments have to complete final review of final engineering plans for residential developments within 90 days after the application is deemed complete. And it does give the city a 14-day period in which an application is deemed complete. But like the building permit review process, our engineering permit process is the same way, in that it's typically iterative. We get, submit corrections, they come back, we review it again. They, sometimes there's more corrections, et cetera. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to deal with this when we can't have that process anymore. And when I talk about final engineering review, the, the way that the process works is that an applicant will typically come in for a land use or development review approval. They'll get that approval, and as part of that, they will submit preliminary design for, or preliminary concepts or designs for engineering, or public improvements, or engineering utilities, that type of thing. And then, and then we have them, as a condition of approval, submit the final detailed drawings post-approval, and we assure that it complies generally, or substantial compliance, with the land use approval. So it doesn't include the land use process, but it includes the post-approval process has to be done within 90 days. It does allow, this one is, is, is better than the other bill in that it allows an applicant to extend the timeline with the city so that they don't have to, if the city is, doesn't force the city to basically deny the application, because they're coming up on that timeline and have to, have to have them reapply. So it allows the applicants to say, wait, I will extend the timeline so that we can work on this and we can get the plans moving along. So I think that this bill is a little bit better in that respect. The other part of this bill, which is kind of odd, is they, they, they create this new term called urban housing application, and they define it as a quasi-judicial decision, which is typically a decision that goes to a public hearing, a land use application that goes to a public hearing, that would amend a comp plan, seek a variance, adopt a planned unit development, divide a site, a land division, or a siting of any type of dwelling structure. And essentially, what it does is it allows, by defining this, it creates a, it creates a stick for the, basically the city to make sure that they could meet the 120-day deadline for these land use reviews. And if they don't, then the consequence is that they have to potentially pay reasonable engineering costs, attorney, and attorney's fees if the applicant prevails on a claim against the local government for failing to meet the timeline. That applies to both, and final engineering review, the 90 days that I just talked about, as well as the 120 days in which we have to approve or deny an urban housing land use application. So before, if we didn't meet that deadline, an applicant could file what's called a writ of mandamus, which then would go up to certain court, circuit court, which then could result in an order for the city to just approve the application right where it is. Well, now, I guess that consequence is still there, but now we have a monetary consequence as well if the city doesn't comply. I think the most interesting part, and what thankfully does not, is not really going to affect Lake Oswego, is that there's another provision that's just randomly in there that just completely waives the design review process or requirements that are related to or requirements that are related to aesthetics, landscaping, building orientation, or parking, or building design for any urban housing application for the development of 20 or more residential lots or parcels. So basically, any land division that is 20 or more lots. We don't have those size of land divisions anymore. We just don't have big lots like that in the city. So I'm not worried about that here, but it's unclear to me where this came from or why you would want to. It seems like those are the very types of applications. You would want to apply those kinds of standards, but this bill would not allow the cities to apply those types of standards for these, for those kinds of subdivisions. This bill, if it becomes effective, would be, or if it's passed, would become effective about three months after it's approved. That's it. So if you have any questions, I know you ask questions as we went along, but if you have any questions or comments, now's the time.
It seems like the intention of a lot of these is sort of like cut the red tape for developers, but it seems like at least the last two you mentioned might lead to more processes, I guess. It's just an observation, really. But the general theme of all these seems to be trying to cut red tape for developers. Is that interpretation correct, do you think, or?
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement.
Yeah, you know, I think it's worth pointing out that a lot of the recent provisions from the state are kind of directed towards that purpose, for the most part. But, you know, I think there's a lot of potential sort of gray area with particularly the housing production strategy, which is intended to achieve similar means in certain ways, particularly the code audit that we're proposing to do as one of those strategies. So, you know, there's a lot, there's going to be a lot of, you know, potential for that code audit to kind of get to a similar place, I guess, as this HB 2138. I mean, at least some of the provisions you might think would be similar. That would allow, or, you know, reduce barriers to housing. But, you know, we might, you know, in terms of the HPS, actually be required to sort of adopt some of, at least, you know, pieces of these types of provisions earlier than the deadlines in this bill. So depending on what we decide to include in that sort of audit. But, you know, it's something to consider that. We're going to go through that process and then have to probably come back later and clean up again.
Then it requires more responsiveness from city staff. So does it allow to increase fees to accommodate for more staffing, I guess? There's no prohibition on that, so.
No, I don't think so. I think there is one, one portion of HB, I think it's 2138, that says that we can set reasonable fees based on the actual costs and it outlines how we come up with those fees. But for most of the other bills or provisions, it doesn't, it's silent on the fees.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Thanks so much for walking us through, which has undoubtedly been a lot of information and you summarized it for us. Appreciate that. No other questions? We'll go on to item, I think it's item number eight, other business? Eric, do we have other business?
Nothing for today.
Great, thank you. Item nine, schedule review?
Yeah, so I will just confirm that we are canceling the next meeting, May 12th. We are no longer going to hold the meeting. There's no items for us to consider on that day. However, as I've indicated before, on the 28th, we will have a fairly substantive meeting with a lot of things to talk about. So definitely gear up for that. We'll be talking about, you know, as you can see here, something along the lines of six, seven projects as related to housing production strategy. We'll also try to talk about some of the implications of House Bill 2138 on some of those projects and what that could mean. But that will be what we cover on the 28th of May. So just one work session covering, you know, seven different topics. So again, gear up for a little bit of a longer presentation. Well, then, on June 9th, we've scheduled another work session on the home occupation standards, primarily to talk about some of those agricultural uses and to follow up on another direction that we got from you all at the last work session and talk about what we found. So yeah, that's kind of what we have scheduled for now. I would, you know, anticipate some potential changes to the schedule moving forward, particularly with respect to the fair housing work. So yeah, this is all likely to change later this week, but I won't give you too much of a preview for that. But hopefully, we'll have a little bit more content here over the summer as a result.
Thank you. And I'll just add, the May 28th meeting, a lot on the agenda. So to the extent that we can all sort of read as much of the materials before we get here, then we can really get through a lot of that stuff efficiently because it's a packed, packed agenda that day. But thanks, Eric. And other questions, comments? Adjourned.